Okay, thank you. Call the Town of Fuquay Varina Planning Board to order. We will go, we do have a quorum. We'll go right to the explanation of the COVID protocols for the meeting to our Planning Director Pam Davidson.
Thank you. All attendees that have joined the meeting tonight have joined muted. If you wish to speak during the meeting, you will need to notify staff you wish to speak. If you are joining the meeting online and wish to speak, please press the raise hand button. If you are joining the meeting via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. After you've raised your hand, staff will recognize you to speak by calling out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. You will be unmuted at this time and allowed to speak. Once you have finished speaking, you will be muted for the remainder of the meeting. If you wish to speak again, you will need to raise your hand again.
Thank you. We'll go on to item two, approval of the minutes from the October nineteenth, twenty twenty meeting. Everyone had a chance to review the meetings and are there any changes? Any updates? And if not, I'll introduce a, or I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Will they be approved as written?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the amendments are approved. Let's go on to item three, items tabled for previous meetings. Three A, town code amendment. Just a blanket statement on public hearings. The public hearing for this one was already held. However, I will give us the blanket statement for this. Public hearings are a time for petitioners to present requests and for the public to state their concerns and voice opinions in favor of and in opposition to these requests. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, sign in on the sheet provided and state your name and address for the record before speaking in regards to the request. And we had explained the protocols for COVID nineteen in order to handle the public hearings that we will have tonight. This was a previous public hearing, item three A, CTA twenty twenty dash oh six. The petitioner is the Town of Fuquay Varina. Purpose of this agenda item was to consider the proposed text amendment to the town code of ordinances, part nine, land development ordinance, amendment twelve, that addresses several areas of improvement. We had asked the staff to go back and kind of either get imaginative or at least let us do a little bit more homework ourselves. So I think that's where we are. I'll, would you like, you did have an update to the cover page, so I'll allow the staff to, Planning Director, to discuss the changes or the updates that she had for the.
Okay. Do we, do we need to read through the whole thing again?
No, no, I just, 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 no, I'm actually looking for, if it hadn't changed at all, I would, we would have just gone to the business, but there was, you did have some comments in the cover, cover page for us, so.
So I am submitting this portion of the agenda abstract and supporting documents and the official records for the town. The additional information, at the October nineteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting, the planning board unanimously voted to table this request based on board member discussion directly relating to the multifamily development separation standard. Before and following the October nineteenth Planning Board regular meeting, staff has reviewed and examined alternative scenarios that would achieve the multifamily development vision originally intended in form-based code zoning districts. Staff has determined that the multifamily development separation standard language originally presented in this item is the most applicable and appropriate at this time.
Okay. And I, you know, again, after discussions both with staff and, and others, that, you know, this is essentially the same, we're, you're making the same recommendation as, as the previous meeting. It's just that now we have a little bit more, hopefully the planning board has a little bit more information on that. I'll, I'll just, to kind of state where, where I am on this, just so that everybody can understand. We've had, had about a month to look at this and to talk about the, but to me, it looks like in the original land development ordinance, there was an understanding that standard garden apartments were, in a sense, not, we didn't want them everywhere. So they, they had a, they were desirable to the extent that, that we could spread them out throughout the town. And that was the fifteen hundred limit on that. So there was an understanding of that. There was also, in my view, an understanding that the form-based code really didn't need to, at that time, address particularly garden-style apartments. There kind of almost was this assumption that even if we'd put in garden-style apartments, they'll be form-based, so, you know, they're going to be aesthetically pleasing, they're going to be, they're going to fit in with our vision. And from what I see in general, that hasn't happened. There's been form-based developments that have not kept in with our vision of form-based while staying within the guardrails of the actual requirements of the, of the form-based code. So the, so, and then, so in order to get the vision, and again, this is, I'm stating this so that I make sure that everybody could kind of, this is where I'm coming from, so that we understand this, or, or can be corrected. So there, what we have then is a proposal in order to improve the quality of the product that we get with multifamily. Maybe especially in form-based, but within form-based. So what's important there, I think, is that the, the two parts of the proposal, one is to make the distance requirement, the spreading it out, also apply to form-based. That's kind of the first, the first take. Have that applied to form-based. And that would essentially, I don't know if incense is the right word, but it would encourage the development of more mixed-use pieces of property that were not garden apartments. Garden apartments, by definition, residences on the first floor. The mixed-use development is essentially, for vertical mixed-use is, on the first floor, there would be something non-residential, commercial, retail, that kind of thing. So, and then the other part of that was to, because we already, because, you know, essentially we saw these form-based developments as being oasis of beauty, if you will, that didn't happen, that we really wanted to expand this limitation to garden-style apartments by adding additional distance to the fif, from the fifteen hundred to the three thousand, as far as the recommendation goes. And I think, for me, it comes down to, are garden apartments that bad? That we, you know, and obviously, we thought that there was something not desirable about having a community completely made up of garden apartments, which makes sense to me. And then, you know, is this the right way to move forward to get what we want? I've been rather disappointed that we're, we haven't found a way to make form-based garden-style apartments palatable for us. Because that's really what we, I think that's really what we would like and kind of what we assumed we get, that, that's not, that hasn't gotten there. I think it's also, then the next part of it, well, if we're not getting that, then, then is the mixed use? Because my, one of my concerns is that mixed use will present, it's all, you know, especially if we, okay, now, everybody's got to be mixed use, so we, we essentially have even more vertical development, which is, I think, is probably good. But then we have a bunch of first floors that are, you know, what are they doing initially? How long does it take to fill them out from the commercial side? And most of the, the mixed-use developments that we've had, whether they're, you know, horizontal mixed-use or vertical mixed-use, sometimes seems to have problems filling in the, that commercial, commercial side. So I was honestly hoping for some sort of a, oh, we can really make the form-based, kind of, you know, tighten it up and make sure that if garden apartments are built in a form-based, that they're built to what we expect. And I think the problem is unless we essentially eliminate garden-style apartments within form-based by encouraging the mixed-use development, that we don't have really any kind of leverage part of that statutory. You know, what's, what's, you know, there's only so much we can do within, within our own ordinances that the state allows us to do. And then others are, are really trying to make sure that we can encourage developers to develop what, what we want them to develop here in, in Fuquay Varina. So, you know, I want to hear from other, other folks on the, on the planning board. And, you know, I, like I said, I'd like to have a better option. And, and I'd like, like to be able to present a better option to, to the Board of Commissioners, because, you know, this is essentially kind of playing real hardball, I think, in terms of, of really cleaning out the options for building garden-style apartments here. I think we need density, we need, we need, we need apartments. We do need affordable housing here. And that's, you know, and, but, you know, we need nice, you know, everybody delivers, deserves to live in something somewhat decent, so, especially if they're in our town. So I will leave it there. I'm going to, I'm going to listen, I guess it's kind of clear, my mind hasn't been made up. I just, I'm not a big fan of what, what's right in front of us. I would just like to see something different, but I, I'm not certain I have any good ideas either, after talking with everyone. But anybody else want to chime in or have a, have an idea? Or correct me if they feel something, something different or.
I agree. That's where I'm kind of stuck, deciding what to do too. Kind of the vision, understand why they're trying to do what they do. I just don't know that it's the best way to do it. I think now if somebody really brings us something creative that we're looking for, that it may get turned down just because it falls.
Some distance requirement. So I don't know. I guess I'm like you, I'm kind of stuck. I was hoping for something a little, little different, something that we could get behind. I mean, I, I don't want to see our main corridors just full of garden-style apartments. I just, I would hope there'd be something in the form-based that would tighten that up, do it a little bit better. I don't know, I guess I'm with you. I'm undecided. I wish there was a different answer. And I hate to vote no, but I feel bad voting yes. I'm kind of torn on what to do.
I think this could be a, in the way I view this, is almost like it's a temporary solution at this point. I don't think this is going to be our ultimate permanent fix. I think it, right now, is going to calm everything down. I don't, just from in, in, looking at other municipalities, I think other municipalities are struggling with garden-style apartments right now, too. And seeing them pop up all over the place and getting them permitted and getting them approved has been increasingly more difficult over the years, just I don't know what the, I don't know why the market has switched to these apartments. I don't know what's caused that, but I think what Jim and Ed have hit on are right, that I think there's probably a better way in the code to get there, but I could see this being a temporary solution to where, this buys us time to where now projects have to kind of calm down a minute and give staff time to actually go through and look at the end of the code and look at the form-based code. I guess that would be my question, Pam, is you guys think that you guys are going to be, we look at LDO amendments fairly often. I mean, it's not every month, but is that something on staff's radar to be looking at? How to revamp form-based? Because it doesn't sound like, it doesn't really sound like this is the only issue in form-based that we're really having. It's not working out exactly the way we thought, which is, hey, that's what happens when you write a new code and you change and you move something in that we haven't had before.
Right. It is definitely on our radar to do, I don't want to say cleanup, but a revamp, let's say, maybe of the form-based code. Now that we do, you know, we actually have a couple of form-based projects under construction. You know, the, the first thing we noticed was obviously the roads and we've, we've gone in and really made those a lot more user-friendly. They were pretty pictures originally, but now we understand how they work. But it is definitely on our radar to go through and look at all the form-based, the entire form-based code, specifically article B, appendix B, and see how, how it is actually really working compared to what our intent is. So that is something I don't know exactly, you know, our next big push is going to be the one sixty D update. So I'm not sure exactly what the timing is for the form-based, but we definitely would like to go back and look at that now that they're actually being built and, and we're seeing how it is, the code is being interpreted in the physical landscape.
Yeah. So essentially learning some lessons on, on stuff that's actually seeing the, seeing the progression of when you impose a code and then seeing what happens with the development as it follows that code. It generally takes a couple of years to follow that in, so I could see where this could be a temporary fix. I don't, I don't think this is going to be the end-all, be-all, because I think you guys are right. I think at some point, a project's going to try to come in and we're going to be like, oh, man, that's really cool, but man, we can't approve it. And then, then what? But I guess that's kind of the play the opposite side. I could see where this is a temporary solution and then we tend to come in there and revamp the ordinance and come back out and take that out as part of it. Once we've modified that, that form-based zoning area to give a little bit more teeth, this piece then could come back out and do another LDO amendment.
Yeah, I think that's the, kind of the sense I got even from staff in general, was that this is, is about getting some breathing room to ensure that we don't, because, you know, once a garden-style apartment complex is built, it's going to be part of our town for fifty-plus years.
You got to be careful with market corrections, right?
Right, yeah.
Just because the market's hot and then you go in there and build all these, you know, the market corrections and being very reactive is, is a dangerous thing with the code.
Right.
Well, I talked with Pam and she's a pretty good salesman on this. Still is an ETJ member and a large landowner. I mean, there's three parcels in my area next to Marquee Station and I'm the middle one. I still struggle with it. I understand Pam did a good job, we talked the other day and she, I completely understand where you're coming from, but I just, I'm not planning on selling anytime soon. We don't know what's going to come up in the future. But I just, as being a landowner there, I hate to see it, you know, go from fifteen to three thousand all in one jump, you're doubling it, you know, being I do have apartments next to me. But, but whatever the town decides to do, I'll live with it, you know. But you, you did do a good presentation talking to me about it the other day, Pam.
Well, thank you.
Sure did.
And I think that the key here is, is apartments are not the only.
Right.
Way to divest land.
I'd definitely like to see the quality go up even on those, you know.
And especially in that area, I think there's some creative solutions that can be done. You know, the northern part of that does surpass that three thousand feet boundary.
Right.
So if it is part of a mixed-use development, you know, there still could be freestanding mixed-use product integrated into that.
And that creativity that future developers can bring to the town can be used in further revamping the code later. We can learn a lot as we, we go through this. And so for me, that, it's, it's attractive to me at this point is we can do this and we can learn from it and we can grow our codes to be better, a better representative of what we really want for the future for the town.
Yeah, if I didn't have property in it, I'd been sold a hundred percent.
Hopefully you're here in the public interest.
I actually used Marquee Station and your property to, to measure what three thousand feet look like, to see from Marquee where that took us down.
Oh, it would go, it would go into my.
And it goes into, yes.
Yeah.
So that gave me a good visual of what is.
It is a good, it is a good sample, because it helped me as well, because it's something, you know, area we're familiar with.
I guess the question.
And like I say, if it, if it didn't affect me there, I'm all for the quality in the most.
But it's not to say they couldn't put another apartments, they just couldn't be garden-style.
Right.
They would have to be.
Right.
Form-based.
Yeah.
Form-based mixed-use or, or some sort of a, you know.
I think the other thing to look at is, is which ways it harms more. If you approve something like this where it stops the garden-style apartments and we have to hold off on a couple of projects for a couple, for six months or a year until we've revamped our zoning ordinance and we have a cool project that now the ordinance now allows for it, we've held off that development for six months to a year. And granted, I know what that does to developers. But the other side of it is that what if you don't do anything now and somebody comes in to build a garden-style apartment where we really, we can't stop them, but that's not something we want to see and we have to live with that decision for twenty years.
Right. More than that. More than that.
More than that. I was using twenty as the low baseline, but I mean, like, which one is the worst scenario there?
Right.
And in my mind, putting a temporary halt is, is less invasive in the better, in the betterment of the town, at least for the short term. But I think that has to be qualified with the fact of knowing that we're working on some other avenues that don't preclude it and gives us more teeth to look at them on a more project-by-project basis.
Or maybe it'll make the developers rethink their design a little bit, so it can work and give us something a little bit, you know.
More in line with.
Yeah, I think that's, I think the struggle is always market, right? We, we go with this vertical mixed-use, which is a really cool concept. I just, I think the struggle is getting it to where it's applicable and profitable and, and developers are, they're only going to do things that are profitable. I mean, that's, that's just, that makes perfect sense, right? They're in, they're in the business to make money.
Because we're working on a lot of projects now in other areas where we're, it's still, if you want to call it garden-style, it's still three-story walk-up, but it's urban and looks urban and it doesn't look like your traditional apartments and it seems to fit in. What seems to me be what we're after is just make them not look like your traditional three-story walk-up garden with vinyl siding and the things that come with it. I mean, voting yes to this is just going to preclude something like that, but I, I agree. I mean.
Did you have any, any thoughts? Give everybody a chance. I, I get the town's intent and I, I can understand that. I'm trying to think, Andy mentioned if something, you say something really cool comes in and we can't, I'm trying to think, what types of grounds for variance would there be on something like this, you know? Every, I, I still go back to what we talked about last month. I think this is one way to solve the problem and maybe a very good way. I don't know that it's the only way. But I don't know what the other options would be at this point.
I think there's other municipalities that have some guidance for us, that we can, we could steal some stuff from them or, or talk to them and talk to our neighbors and figure out how they're doing it. I mean, Fuquay's not the only municipality around here that's, that's fighting this and is able to achieve things. I mean, you got Cary that somehow manages to get CVS to build dual fronts and, you know, they have teeth in their ordinance to allow that to happen. So I think there's, there's, somehow there's language to be done. I just don't know that you can get to it in.
Right, you're not going to.
You're not going to get to it tomorrow, you know, it's going to take some time to get there. I'm not saying that we want to be Cary, I'm just saying there's, there's some case studies there for us to take some, some text and some guidance from.
So there, so there are two, there are two parts to this. Again, just to lay it down a little bit logically, the two parts are, does the distance apply to all zoning districts, including form-based? That's one kind of decision point to make. And the other one is, does the fifteen hundred need to expand and does it need to expand to three thousand? I think if, if we can kind of come to a consensus on that, at least the recommendation to the Town Board of Commissioners, we can, we can kind of move this along. I think the other thing I will point out, the rest, I don't think any of us had any issues with the rest of the, of the town code ordinance. I want to make sure that I'm reading that right. So this was the only kind of sticking point we wanted to, to solve and I think it really is down to, does it apply to form-based and does it apply, and do we want to expand it? So how does everybody feel about just, just expanding it to form-based? Are we all, all good with that idea that, that form-based is just another zoning district and, and if we're going to put in a, a limit that it should, should, it probably should have applied when we put it in in the first place and now it should apply now? How's everybody feel about that as a, as a concept?
Well, can I ask a question? Go back to a couple, I want to make sure I remember things correctly from a month ago. Andy, I think you asked the question of, in, in terms of, I think it was, you know, then with the interaction of uses within the mixed, mixed-use development, were there things that, you know, other tools or authority that staff could have to make sure that those developments, you know, were designed the, in the town's view, the appropriate way? Is there still a need for that even with this three-thousand-foot distance?
So if I understand your question, there currently are, based on the different form-based uses, the RMU, UMU and NMU, there are different facade standards as far as glazing, frontages, awnings, dwarfways, things like that, that will still apply across the board. Is that what you?
But I think we were getting to, I think our discussion last month was more, are there other things that staff can do to ensure that the mixed-use development, without being necessarily first-floor, all non-residential?
Meets the quality that we're going for.
Correct.
Okay. So we did look into that. We looked into some neighboring jurisdictions and see what sort of regulations. We looked into, could we add increased facade or structure regulations that would get the look we're going for at this moment? And where we felt that had a challenge was, is it, is a little stifling to what we see today. We could decide, you know, we could go find some really pretty pictures of, you know, development we think is what we like and we could write the code around that, but that doesn't necessarily, you know, building is like fashion, right? It's going to evolve and change. So if we strictly dictated what we're looking for today, that might then hinder us in the near future as it changed. And then we couldn't approve something that was creative and exciting because we had written it too tight and narrow. Where the form-based, I think, you know, we're trying to work with broader things to challenge people to, to come up with kind of the new designs.
So a potential solution that solves one problem but might generate three or four more problems farther down the road?
Yeah.
Well, but I mean, I guess if there are another solution too, where, I mean, we're assuming apartments, they're only, they come to in form-based. I mean, could there be an avenue where you force apartments to go through a PUD document? And that's where you kind of get some other documentation other than plans to follow that with it, that helps, almost like specific project-by-project, which is kind of what PUDs are set up to do. And that could be another avenue, we keep going back to form-based, but that's just because that's what we use. But there, there could be an avenue, I mean, we just, in this code amendment, we've got mobile homes and we're only allowing them in one zoning district. And part of that is so that you can control and see how that goes through, because it's a very specific use. And you want to be able to see it and be able to kind of not control, but at least have some, some oversight with it. I think apartments could follow the same thing, you know? Maybe it's not a revamp of the, of the form-based zoning, maybe it's a revamp of apartments only allowed in a PUD and then those PUD documents start to be outlined. I think there could be some of those in there as well. I think we got to be careful with just saying that it's only a form-based thing.
Yeah, I think, again, yeah. And again, with the, the question I think I had open was whether the distance requirement applied to form-based, because then that, that would say, you can build a, you, you have, you know, twenty acres of a form-based development, but because part of it was close, too close to where another garden, where garden-style apartments were, within that form-based, you can't put in any garden-style apartments, essentially. I mean, that's what we're trying to get to and that would then force that developer to then put in a vertical mixed-use. If they wanted high, high-density residential, apartment-type residential, they would then be, have to go to a vertical mixed-use project for that. Which is, and that's, that'd be the, the impact of, of having whatever distance we decide apply to form-based. So I guess that, that's why I had that kind of, you know? And again, it may be that, you know, we, we don't, we don't think it should apply and we should have, we should manage or control or guide apartment development within the form-based code differently than, than the rest of the, you know, and have that be independent of, of the distance. Because I, I mean, that's, that would be something that I think we were kind of, called kind of like, isn't there a way we can do that? To make the form-based have a little bit more teeth, I guess, and, and get us closer to where we want to be with that.
But we're changing it across the board, right? So it's just apartments. Is it just form-based or is it apartments in general?
So currently, there is a fifteen-hundred-foot separation on mixed-use, or sorry, multifamily development, but it excludes mixed-use. So the form-based.
So the form-based lets you get around it, so we're.
Right, so, so, yeah, so the fir, the first thing is, do we, then, for, in my view, is, do we apply it to?
We apply it to form-based and then we're, the intent is to apply to three thousand to the general, so that both, it's applied to all and three thousand's applied to both. Where, I agree with you, I just wish it was some way to do like a conditional zoning process where each project's looked at on a case-by-case basis and if you don't like that or the style.
And I think we thought the form-based was going to give us more teeth to do that. And it sounds like developers have discovered.
Well, the challenge is.
We're a toothless tiger.
Yeah, when a form-based comes in as a master plan.
You don't see.
We're not looking at a layout. We are just looking at zones. And then there are uses allowed in those zones. So sometimes in the written document, they do specify potential residential types.
Right.
Or, or prohibit them. But in general, you know, we basically have certain residential types at certain densities allowed in each of the form-based districts. But in general, you know, we basically have certain residential types at certain densities allowed in each of the form-based districts. So even right now, as, as they are coming in, um, we don't, with, I mean, the rezoning is where you want to catch those kind of things.
Yeah.
You're not seeing it.
So we really don't see it until once they get it rezoned, then they have their ticket to do that development and they move, they can proceed again.
Well, we, and we still, I, I think, yeah, then we have to hold them to the, either the conditions or to, or to the specifics of the form-based code. If the form-based code can be more.
Have more teeth.
Yes, have more teeth, okay.
Well, then I think we have to get into when we do the form-based and you get that document in and you get those list of uses in those different pods. That's where you can kind of shape those pods. And maybe, maybe there's a scenario where there's a big tract and somebody can manage to stick some garden-style apartments in the center where you can't really see it. And somehow that shows up. And I think that's where the teeth come into play. And more mapping and more stating exactly kind of what your uses are in these specific nodes or pods or parcels, whatever you want to call it.
Right.
But that's the reason.
The challenge is, is the more detail you get into with these master plans, the harder it becomes to actually carry it through engineering without having to go back and amend the master plans.
Yeah, it's too bad you can't just put like a line in that says, just don't make it ugly.
I think there's a middle ground somewhere. I just, in, in working in multiple municipalities, I think there's a middle ground somewhere. I mean, I've got other municipalities ask for water and sewer services at a master plan level. And to me, that's ridiculous, but I think there's a middle ground somewhere in there.
Well, I agree. Developers spending a ton of money to not know if they have zoning, I think is a little unfair too. We get stuck with that in a lot of jurisdictions where you're basically submitting CDs and you don't know if you have zoning approval, which is not fair, I don't think, to the development world. But I agree, we did Royal Creek and you didn't know what you were going to get until we actually submitted the site plans for the apartments. It was a part of the, part of the re, yeah, part of the form-based. I know, I just, I wish it was on a case-by-case somehow conditional. So you could just review each one. If you don't like it, you disapprove the zoning. If you like it, you approve it, but.
And I think that's where we want to get to. That's the only reason I think this could be a, a temporary flex to let us get there. Provided that is the, provided we don't just pass something and then all of a sudden we go, eh, we're good. And then that's where it stays. That, that kind of doesn't feel like the right answer either.
Well, I, yeah, I don't think we can pass it temporarily. It's.
No, no, I mean, like, once, no, no, what I think is like.
Planning board makes a recommendation, this is in effect for five years.
What I'm saying is like, what I'm saying is, say you pass something like that and then all of a sudden we don't actually go back and work on it and look at how to do that. Then we really, then what do we really do?
Right, because then, then it's just a blanket.
Yeah.
Essentially, it becomes very close to a blanket prohibition on garden-style apartments in Fuqua Arena. I mean, the, the way it stands now, not fully blanket, but you end up with just a, there's a few, you know, there's a few pockets where you can put them in. And, and even those where they put them may not be where we actually want them, but it's just, we just want to limit the number, um, so.
I think the other thing to bring up too is, is Pam, could you talk a little bit about how we still have some language in the code that allows people that already have those to do some expansions? So that, you know, this doesn't really hinder them from being able to, they're basically locked into what they have?
Right, we, it depends how it would be handled. We do have, um, language for expansions in the code. So we would have to really look and see at what the extent of the project was, was, is purely an expansion of an existing development versus a new development next door. So I think in a sense, that would be taking it on a case-by-case basis to see how that would apply.
So, um, because I'd like to really pass this on to the Board of Commissioners with something. And even, and, and I think part of it will be, you know, whatever we pass on to the Board of Commissioners, we, we have to be clear, it's not the ideal. I mean, that's, it's, it's not exactly what we would like. And maybe it's because there's not, you know, there is no perfect solution. So we, you know, hopefully we can come up with the best recommendation we can make. And, um, and I think there's probably enough fodder for the Board of Commissioners to have a deep discussion just like this about, um, what, you know, what the, um, pros and cons of, of something like this are. So I, like I said, in trying to break it down, break it down to, um, you know, does it apply to form-based or not? Because I think that really was, in my view, it was the priority. Let's apply something to form-based because form-based is not quite doing what we need it to do. And so we need to spread them out as a, as a result, you know, and ensure that form-based are included in that formula for, for spreading out garden-style apartments. So that's the first thing. And I think that's something that I could support. I could support saying, okay, let's apply this to, to form-based. With of course, the recommendation that we really look at a way to get, get, um, teeth to the form-based code so that they can, maybe the exemption is actually something that's, um, that, you know, pulls developers towards a form-based code. Because if we make it too difficult, then they're just going to go with regular development anyways. You know, so we, we kind of need to look at, look at that. So my recommendation, or at least my thought or something I could support would be, um, to, yes, let's apply the limit, whatever the limit is, let's apply it to form-based. So right now, if we did just that, it would be recommending 1,500 feet and applied to all zoning districts. That, that's something I, I could probably support. Um, and then it allows us to talk about the distance, you know? Does it need to be 3,000? Should it be something in between? Or do we leave it at 15? And make that recommendation. But, you know, it's, um, I'm, I'm open to discussion on that. If, again, if we're all on, more or less on the same page with the, um, you know, with the idea of, okay, let's, let's apply whatever it is. Let's apply it to form-based and then let's talk about the, the distance.
I would agree. I mean, might as well be.
We got support for that?
Might as well be consistent across the board.
I think we can all recognize that form-based has some.
Cause that, for me, that, that's a feeling of, you know, equity and, and fairness, you know, in, in the code. So that's, that, that's an idea that, uh, you know, I can embrace. So let's talk about the distance. Right now it's 1,500. Um, the, the recommendation is 3,000. We all kind of have that, that feeling. I, I'm okay with, um, leaving it at 1,500. I'll be honest with you. I think that, uh, I don't think that, that already impacts some projects, I think, that have been proposed. But it's also, I think it's a, it's, it's a, you know, a close enough distance that you can have some stuff in between. But you're not, you're not going to have one on top of the other. But what we also, we do need to encourage some higher-density development within our town. And guard, you know, apartments in general are just going to have to be part of that. We're, we're not going to be able to sprawl out at single, at single families. Townhomes have a, a certain appeal too, but they only can go so far. You know, we do need, um, you know, and I, and I've said it, said a lot where, you know, the people that work for our town, you know, the, the police, the fire, our teachers that work for the county, um, you know, the other essential workers that we have, they need a place to live as well, um, that's decent and, and in a nice town like the town they live in, Fuqua Arena. So, um, I, I would, uh, I would actually propose that we leave the distance, recommend that the distance be left at 1,500, but that it applied to all zones. That to me is, is definitely a compromise. I, I feel, I feel a compromise here. But, you know, it's also something that the, the Town Board can then kind of debate and work with, I think.
I guess it would, is there a reason why it was from 15 to 3,000? Is there, was there a, a logic behind 3,000 as opposed to 1,500? I mean, I personally don't think 3,000 is horrible. I mean, when I think about it, stoplights are about every, what, 1,200 feet? So we're talking about two stoplights. That doesn't sound unreasonable, but I was just be interested to hear what, what the logic was between 3,000.
We reflect it sort of the pattern of development that we see right now. And just looking at what we felt were, was a, a fair pattern going up the quarters.
And another thing I think we have to keep in mind too is this, and when you limit the distance of it, we also have to be good neighbors to the people that are already here, right? I mean, Marquee Station, they've been, you know, good to the town for years. And if, if somebody moves in right next to them, that obviously hurts them as well. So we have to kind of think about that kind of stuff as well with distances and proximities and where people can build next to each other and, and those kind of things. I mean, competition is good, oversaturation is bad.
But I agree, 1,500's in the code. We've been living with it for years. We're just trying to apply it to the loophole, correct? Would seem like the form-based.
That's kind of my take on it.
I probably could support that.
I also don't necessarily think that apartments are that bad.
If done, if done right.
There, there, you know, I, on top of each other, I get it. I, I get it. On top of each other, I get it, but apartments are not necessarily, uh, in and of themselves, uh, uh, you know, a blight on our town, if you will, so.
No, but they do bring, they also bring that, that extra traffic. I'm looking at the 3,000 on the actual map and then driving, this is where Marquee is, and driving that 3,000, that seemed like a decent distance to have one large apartment and then have another large apartment. And then you can have the daycare center that they had in the middle, your house that was right there, and baby C store, all of this, all this right, that's right there. It just seemed like a.
It seemed right.
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 Like you wouldn't want another one right where the daycare center is or right, you know? It just seemed like that might be too close. So that was my thought too, was like, how did you get to the 3,000 square feet? And when we talked about it, they explained it. And then when I physically drove it, it, it made sense.
Yeah. And, and that, and again, I, I'm, I'm think, you know, I want to have that discussion about that. And I, I'll probably support whatever anybody, you know, well, we could come to a consensus here.
Get into a difficult situation where he, certain, what if you support one part of what somebody proposes, not the other part? And then we fail into realize there's all these other parts in the code too.
Yeah, yeah, so, so.
So you got to be careful with how much of a conditional.
We're trying, I'm trying to narrow it down to something that we can, again, pass on a recommendation to the, the Town Board so that they can, because there, there is obviously some, we've brought some, up some good issues that they're going to have to chew on as well. Uh, because this isn't, you know, it's clear that whatever we recommend is not necessarily ideal, but it's, it's, uh, you know, where we, we could make a, a good recommendation. Yes, uh.
So we wouldn't want to, uh, make a recommendation to approve the text amendment as written, but then encourage the town to go back or the, encourage the board to direct staff to go back and pursue other options in updating the ordinance?
Yeah, that's.
Provide more flexibility, uh, to the town in reviewing and, and approving developments that aren't stuck with a 3,000-foot.
I think, I think that'd be an appropriate, an appropriate way to do that.
Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman Ridpath. I just wanted to go, give a little bit more context to where the 3,000 feet came from. So the last nine to 12 months, Development Services, particularly Pam, have been meeting with developers who are proposing to do garden-style apartments all along 55 and 401, whether they personally talk to property owners or not. But I can show you every piece of property along, coming in from Ali Springs and coming in from Raleigh, where, uh, and I think we had a, we had a map last time, which illustrated some potential projects. And so if you're taking a look at it, if you just close your eyes and take a look at it, imagine if all of those properties became garden-style apartments. Think about the insularity issues that you then have to deal with, traffic, transportation. So what we came up with, looking at the current existing apartments in our community, whether or not 1,500, 2,000, you know, at 1,250, whatever that number is, thinking about what other types of developments could go in between, let's just say, Marquee Station. If you were to have, if you were to build, uh, apartments, garden-style apartments, right next to Marquee Station going north on 401, you don't leave yourself for any of those supporting developments, commercial, medical, uh, ONI, that can be now integrated into the develop, or integrated into the landscape. And then you are stuck with apartments for the next, uh, you know, 30, 40, 50 years. So the point of having, I want to make it very clear, we're not, we are not against multifamily development. What we are trying to accomplish are these integrated uses that support multifamily development and support existing multifamily development and, uh, support single-family development, townhome development. And we believe the 3,000 feet, just looking at our map, which 3,000 feet is really not, I think, uh, uh, Mr. Petty had a good comment. It's two traffic lights. Uh, and that's really a good way to look at it. Because ideally, any community would want to have, um, you know, multifamily, you know, separated with other types of commercial uses to support multifamily, then a single-family development, then maybe a school, maybe medical. But you, you got to have that separation between uses. And so that's why we ultimately came up with the 3,000 feet, looking at what type of uses would go in there, based on buffers and standards. So if you want to have commercial, you're going to have different standards than you are residential. So that's why we went from 1,500 to 3,000 feet. And if you go, if you plot 3,000 feet all along the corridor, uh, we believe that that is a better separation. And like I said, we're not prohibiting multifamily. What we are asking are the developers to come in with more of a challenged design that integrates those other types of uses. So wanted, wanted to just provide that as far as context, so thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, I think we, we've, we've got a little bit of consensus on the idea of applying it to form-based. I think we might have support for some sort of number that gets thrown out there. You know, I'd, I'd like to get to, to a, to a winner if we can.
I think we're all in agreement that, that the better way to handle this is through individual sites and being able to look at that. So I, I, I'm fine with 3,000, honestly. If that gets us to the point where the Town Board, you know, has the staff look at how to revise the ordinance to where we can get to this point where we're looking at it individually.
But does that trigger them to do it? Or does it just get stuck and it never comes back?
Well, here, here, here's the thing. I think that, you know, essentially if we go with what the staff recommendation is, which is what we're, we're talking about. I mean, that's essentially what the staff recommendation is. We also are then putting, and, and I think, I hope you guys take this as a severe burden, to actually continue searching for alternatives that really get us what we really want. This is, gives, gives the town some breathing room and I think that's really what we're looking for. But we got to come up with a, a better answer than this. This is something that'll, you know, okay, you know, that we're, we're good for the storm that's coming. And it's, and yeah, it's a, a storm, the garden-style apartments are falling from the sky. But, um, it really is, the onus is on, on the staff right here. And Jim, I'm talking to you and I'm talking to you too, Pam. To bring this forward to the, to the Town Board of Commissioners, make sure that they understand the issues that we've brought up here so that they can have a good discussion. If I'm watching from, from the, from the rafters like I usually do and, uh, and see like, oh, the planning board approved it, let's go on. I, I, that's not what I want to be approached to. And I don't think that's what any of us want to be given to the, the Town Board of Commissioners. And I would like to see that as part of our motion that we, um, you know, that we, that we do, um, put some onus on, on staff to bring that discussion forward.
That we weren't crazy about the recommendation, but we couldn't think of anything better at the time.
Well, yeah, no, there, there were, there were just a lot of issues. There, there's a lot of issues.
I think that we understand that this is a stepping stone. I, I don't think there's probably any municipality that has developed any type of ordinance or form-based code on the first go-round and never made a change before. It's always about, you're always learning. Every developer that walks through your door, you're learning something new. And I, and we know that it's staff's job to listen to, you know, the needs of the town and what they're hearing from the public, plus what they're seeing from the developers', um, side. And bring that to their desk daily and decide. They're, they see this stuff every day and they'll be the ones that will see when we're ready to make the next change and when we're ready to make that next jump. So I think that this is just a stepping stone. And we let council know that this is, we recognize this is a stepping stone and we need to revisit this as we learn in the future.
I think that was well said.
Yes, thank you. Does anybody feel up to formulating that as a?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All right.
So, but where will this go? Well, before we make a motion, when the, when the board sees this, will it be as, as additional information on the cover page? Okay.
Yes, I, I think we've been, we've been clear as a board and hopefully I've been clear as Chair about the information we want brought forward. We'll, we'll incorporate that in the motion or at least the, the point that we want additional information brought to the Town Board of Commissioners.
All right, I'm going to give it a shot.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to recommend approval of CTA 2020-06 Amendment 12. An amendment to the Town Code of Ordinance is Part 9, Land Development Ordinance. As presented and recommended by town staff with the, uh, additional recommendation that Town Board instructs staff to further investigate into the ordinance how to clean up form-based and also add in some language that gives us, um, a little bit more teeth in, in obtaining what we want as it relates to multifamily uses. How about that?
That sounds like a good motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think, uh, hopefully everybody's had a chance to discuss this and think about, but still an opportunity to, any further discussion?
Does the motion seem clear enough to staff? Comfortable with?
Okay. I, I think, I think we've done a good job of making it clear. And, yeah, I, I, and we all know this is hard. Okay. So no further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the, uh, the effort in this one from everyone, staff and, and the board. Um, this was a, this was a tough one and probably the reason we're here. All right, let's go on to, we're going to, on to, uh, item four, Public Hearing 4A. We're going to, on to item four, Public Hearing 4A. Public Hearing Item 4A, REZ 2020-16. Petitioner is Malden Watkins, surveying PA. Purpose of this agenda item is to consider a requested zoning map amendment for a total of 3.005 acres located at 9721 and 9739 Fayetteville Road, US 401, from the Office and Institutional Zoning District, ONI, to the General Commercial Conditional Zoning District, GCCZD, and a corresponding land use plan amendment from Civic and Institutional, Civ, to Highway Commercial, HC. Further information will be provided by staff.
Thank you. I am submitting the agenda abstract and supporting documents into the official records of the town. The subject properties are two non-contiguous 1.5-acre lots totaling 3.005 acres and are located in the town's corporate limits. There are currently no structures on either of the properties. The zoning map amendment petition requests approval of the General Commercial Zoning District. This zoning district is intended to permit a mix of high-intensity non-residential development of retail, office, institutional, employment centers, and service uses. This district is generally located at intersections of and along arterial roads, freeways, expressways, parkways, and boulevards, and major thoroughfares serving an area of two miles or greater. The petitioner is requesting the following conditions applicable to the use of the subject property. Only the following uses shall be permitted: mixed-use development, conference center, banquet hall cultural adaptive use, community service, daycare accessory, daycare commercial, school, trade vocational, bank, credit union, medical offices, ambulatory healthcare, medical support facilities, park facilities, open and civic space, greenways, parking lot, places of worship, places of worship temporary, broadcasting station radio, small wireless facilities, telecommunication facilities and services, restaurants, restaurants mobile, office business professional, indoor recreation, outdoor recreation, retail sales and service, funeral home, health club, personal service, pet services, special trade contractor, accessory uses, business incubator, flex space, home occupation, and animal hospital veterinary clinic. No other uses will be permitted. Some of these uses listed have been retained for potential future expansion of the subject properties, although they are not currently permissible due to restrictions on lot size. Surrounding properties are a mix of light industrial and office and institutional uses. Cornerstone Family Church is east of the subject properties. Storage and various industrial uses are north, south, and west of the properties. Furthermore, several large tracts of vacant land are west and northeast of the properties. The 2035 Community Vision Land Use Plan calls for the civic and institutional classification at the subject properties. Although the requested zoning district is not consistent with the 2035 Land Use Plan Classification, the petitioner has included a land use plan amendment as part of this zoning map petition, which will be described later in this report. Public water and sewer are available to serve the subject properties. The subject properties are located along and have access to Fayetteville Road, US Highway 401, which is classified as a 300-foot right-of-way by the 2035 Community Transportation Plan. This street is identified as a six-lane median divided road with sidewalk and side path and a carrying capacity of 91,100 average daily trips. It is currently a four-lane median divided road with a carrying capacity of 29,300 average daily trips. 2017 NC DOT traffic counts taken just south of the property on Fayetteville Road near Banks Road indicate a volume of 29,000 average daily trips. The petitioner held a neighborhood meeting on September 28th, 2020 at 1301 Broad Street, Fuqua Marina. The meeting report is attached and staff takes no position as to its content. The 2035 Community Vision Land Use Plan calls for the civic and institutional zoning classification at the subject properties. This classification is defined as land developed to support building or complex of buildings that serve public purpose, including a library, school, police station, fire station, public service, complex, town government, et cetera. The requested zoning district is not consistent with the 2035 Land Use Plan Classification. However, the land use classification of highway commercial as proposed is more appropriate for the location and eventual use. This amendment supports the LUP's recommendation, CF1, invest in existing growth areas, which encourages the extension of utilities and growth of development in areas that are already in the growth process to maximize effectiveness. As such, the requested land use plan amendment is consistent with the 2035 Land Use Plan and its vision. The land use plan amendment, if approved, would allow for the site to be developed more consistently and appropriately as it relates to the proposed use and surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of the proposed zoning map amendment with the corresponding land use plan amendment as it is consistent with the 2035 Community Vision Land Use Plan and reasonable and in the best interest of the public for the following reasons. One, because the requested zoning map amendment is not consistent with the 2035 Community Vision Land Use Plan Classification of civic and institutional. The petitioner has opted to request a change of the land use plan classification to highway commercial, which is more appropriate to the surrounding use, proposed use, and location. Two, the requested zoning map amendment is consistent with the 2035 Community Vision Land Use Plan's recommendation, CF1, invest in existing growth areas. And three, conditions proposed by petitioner effectively limit future development so it is compatible with the surrounding areas. I am available to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions on this one? Okay. The public hearing is now open. Do we have anybody raising their hand to speak?
Yes, we got a couple of hands. Matt Donnelly, please unmute your mic.
Yes, I have a question. I'm with, I attend, one of the pastors at Cornerstone Family Church. Did have a question. If, if this kind of building was allowed on the property, would it affect any use from, as far as what we could do with our property? In that sense, would it affect us in, in something that y'all would approve and not approve or anything like that?
For, just to let you know, public hearing is, do you have a, are you for or against it? And can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Matt Donnelly, at 800 Sweetbrier Road in Anger. And yes, I, I not, don't really take a position either way, just more a question on any effect on anything that we would build or would want to do on the property if, if this was approved.
This, yeah. To let you know, the, the public hearing is not a Q and A session. Staff would be glad to answer your questions normally either before or after the, the public hearing. But, yeah, you can contact staff to get specific questions answered about what permissible uses and what the effect might be on your property. They'd be willing to talk to you about that. So, but yeah.
I thought this, I'm sorry, I thought this was a question and answer. I thought you opened it up for questions.
It's, it's open, it's open to, for the board here to, to get the, uh, public comment and, and opinions in front of us before we make a decision and a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wish to speak in favor or opposition to the, to the town code amendment?
Yes, we got one more phone number ending in 5186. Please unmute your phone.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Hello? Yes, this is Wayne Malden, Watkins surveying. Uh, we are now at 139 North Main Street in Fuqua Marina. Uh, we put this rezoning petition together tonight for faith development ministries that you got before you. Basically, what they have happened is they have, um, we annexed it all and they have sold the church and, and retain ownership of these two lots. And we're trying to do a sort of a, I wouldn't call it broadcasting, but like a studio building up there where they can film and record sermons and stuff, broadcasts from there, or to record them. It was my understanding in talking with staff that if they still own both the church and the lots, that it would be permitted as an accessory use, but since they're in their different ownerships now, we had to rezone to what you have before you tonight. Other than that, I think Pam covered all, all of it real well. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions any of you have.
Thank you, Wayne. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor or in opposition to this rezoning and land use amendment?
There are no more hands raised.
Anyone else? Give them a chance. Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Look to the board if there are any questions or if we entertain a motion if we are ready for one.
I will motion to recommend approval of REZ-2020-16 as submitted by staff, presented by staff.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second? And that would include the land use plan amendment as well?
Yes.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We go on to the next, that's the last of the public hearing. Uh, let's go to other business, item 5A, Planning Board Meeting Schedule. Purpose of this agenda item is to consider setting the planning board's regular meeting schedule for 2021 calendar year. Not a moment too soon. Further information will be provided by staff, but I think the only thing that I saw that was open was January's meeting. Does anybody have any preference of the 12th? I kind of like the, I think it was the 12th, January 12th. This is a Tuesday.
So the suggested alternates are either January 12th, which is a Tuesday, or Wednesday, January 20th. And this is in place of Monday, January 18th, which is Martin Luther King.
It's always a holiday in January when we, so we always have to move the January one, so. I think we've traditionally, if we can call it a tradition, have moved it, you know, moved it earlier. So unless anybody has a problem with January 12th. Okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2021 Town Board Meeting Schedule with January 12th. Matter of fact, I'll make the motion. I moved it. I'm almost there. I, I moved the 2021 Planning Board Meeting Schedule be approved as presented with January's meeting being scheduled on January, Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. Do I get a second?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We've got a schedule for next year. And then there was, there was a census update. More information provided by staff.
Thank you. I am submitting the agenda item and supporting documents into the official records of the town. Since March of this year, the US Census Bureau has been collecting demographic data on American citizens as required by the US Constitution. This year's census has been met with various challenges brought on by COVID-19 global pandemic. Regardless of these unprecedented times, Fuqua Marina was able to accomplish 78.2% self-response rate, an exceptional feat, 10% higher than the response rate of the 2010 census. The remaining 21.8% of the town's population was covered in the Census Bureau's non-response follow-up operation, which began August 11th and consisted of door-to-door enumeration and other boots-on-the-ground-type response recovery. Fuqua Marina's self-response rate was the fourth highest in Wake County behind Holly Springs at 85.1, Cary at 80% and Wake Forest at 78.7. Wake County was the second highest responding county in North Carolina at 73.3. The 2020 census was completed on October 15th with all states in the county reflecting a 99.9% non-response rate follow-up. That rate is reflected on the completion of the Bureau's field workload and is a combination of households that had not responded and quality control cases. The public self-response is always the most accurate and therefore the preferred method of data collection and was utilized in this decennial with great success. The online response rate option, which was brand-new for the 2020 census, combined with them by phone, by mail methods, and email online, leading to one of the complete counts in history. The town's partnership with Wake County and its 11 other municipalities proved to be the key to success, with almost all 12 municipalities meeting and exceeding their 2010 census response rates through the tremendous effort of public and private entities alike. Communities experienced some of the state's highest response rates, helping to ensure North Carolina's fair and equal representation in Congress. To facilitate local census 2020 efforts, the town of Fuqua Marina's Complete Count Census 2020 Committee was formed as a public-private partnership consisting of community members and town staff. This committee worked diligently and successfully facilitated various community-wide public outreach census efforts responsible for marketing and educating members of the Fuqua Marina community to raise census awareness that helped increase the community's chances for an accurate count of our population. The committee consisted of following members of the community members. There was John Adcock, Brian Haynes, Tanya Fabian, Katie Dyes, Tracy Watson, Carlos Menriquez, Derek Grimes, Heather Massengill, Pastor Nathaniel Wood, and Sharon Peterson. Town staff involved was myself, Alyssa Stafford, Jessica Crenshaw, and Allison Wright. The Census Bureau is now preparing the results of the nationwide count for presentation to the president. Reappointment of seats in the House of Representatives will be determined based on these results and released to the public by April 2021. Management and staff, thank you for your support in this effort and we'll bring any further updates before the planning board as they become available.
Thank you. Good job, everyone. That's, that's, that's awesome. That's very good. I'm very impressed actually with not just our report rate, but that the cleanup afterwards, I know, is the most difficult stuff. And I'm, I'm glad that a lot of that got done, so. If there's no other business from anyone, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.